Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the July 2nd meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Clerk, can you please call Row to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on closed-session items only? Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Would you please go over the closed-session agenda?
The City Council will meet in closed session on five items as listed on the agenda. Conference with legal counsel existing litigation. City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91 to confer with legal counsel regarding case, National Prescription Opiate Litigation Case Number 1, 17MD2804, in the U.S. District Court, Northern District of Ohio, Eastern Division. City Council will also conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 to confer with legal counsel regarding litigation to which the city is a party. The title of such litigation is as follows: Public Employment Relations Board, Case Number LACE 1689M. City Council will also meet in CS3, anticipated litigation. City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Sections 54956.9D2 because there is a significant exposure to litigation in one case. City Council will also meet and will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 with the City Manager, City Attorney, and the city's negotiators regarding labor negotiations with the Marietta General Employees Association and the Marietta Supervisor Association. And lastly, the closed session will meet in CS5, Public Employee Performance Evaluation. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Sections 54957B to consider filling the position of City Manager. That concludes announcement of closed-session items.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. With that, we're going to go to recess into closed session, and we'll reconvene at 6:00 P.M. for the regular meeting. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 2nd regular meeting of the Marietta City Council is called to order. Assistant City Attorney, please provide a report from closed session.
There were no reportable accents.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, will you please call Row to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Diego Chavez and remain standing for the invocation led by Pastor Larry Hanson from the Calvary Chapel.
Good evening, everyone. Please place your right hand over your heart and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll bow your hearts and your heads with me, Heavenly Father, we come to you with grateful hearts, recognizing your power and seeking your guidance. Thank you for the privilege of living in the wonderful city of Marietta and for the leaders who serve our community. Lord, please bless each council member with wisdom as they discuss and make decisions for our city. Remind them of the importance of their roles as leaders. Give them a clear mind and a united purpose and a cooperative spirit. Help them to lead with integrity, fairness, and compassion, always looking out for the common good. We also pray for our police and fire departments. Keep them safe as they protect and serve us and guide them with your strength and give them wisdom in every situation they face. Lord, we also want to pray for our new residents coming to Marietta. We ask for a warm welcome and a smooth transition as they join our community. May they find friendship, support, and a sense of belonging here. We lift up the staff of our schools, bless the teachers, the administrators, the support staff with patience, inspiration, and dedication as they nurture and educate our children. We ask for your protection over our city, peace in our neighborhoods, and the well-being for all of our residents. Let our community continue to be a reflection of your love, kindness, and grace. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hanson. Moving on to presentations, I'd like to call Sally Myers to the podium here, please. We're going to turn your mic on. And Sally, we want to give you an opportunity to brag tonight.
Oh, wow.
We want you to tell the audience and those that are listening your vision for reaching out to the students starting in Temecula. And I'm going to let you tell the story how you've expanded with your Student of the Month. And I want, again, take this opportunity to really share with everyone, 33 years?
Correct.
33 years. So the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Sally Myers, and I don't know if I speak to you or to y'all. So yes, the Student of the Month program is one that is very near and dear to my heart, and it is a program that honors outstanding high school, college-bound seniors for their character, their love of learning, how these students juggle numerous activities from campus activities, community service, athletics, or how they have persevered through challenging life circumstances all in a setting that honors God, our country, community, family, and free enterprise. And actually, I don't know where you can go under any one roof and everybody get along and be happy about all those things, but we do at the Student of the Month program. So that's a lot of fun. But the program did begin in Temecula in the '92-'93 school year. And you might say, well, Sally, how did you come up with this idea? I didn't. I actually borrowed the idea and sort of enhanced the idea from the community of Moreno Valley because we own the Sizzler in Moreno Valley, and we were invited to participate as a sponsor in a program that one of the mayors began with Long's Drugstore. And so I went, I fell in love with it, we were a sponsor, and I came back to Temecula in the '92 school year, and I said, hey, Chamber and City, if y'all want to do this, come visit Moreno Valley. And we did, and they loved it. So we started our program in '92-'93, moved up to Marietta, and brought one to Marietta in '95, then up to Lake Elsinore, and then over to Paris and Menifee. So we have four programs. In these 33 years, we have honored over 9,000 students, so that's 9,000 stories. And what's really exciting is that the students are selected by the staff from that mission statement. And so we get amazing students that come to a breakfast, they share their make-a-difference, their passion story, their victory, their story of how they overcome. And those students then compete for a Student of the Year scholarship. And in Marietta this year, we had a record scholarship with $4,000 for our students. So we serve all of the comprehensive high schools in Marietta, along with alternative. We do Charter Springs or Springs Charter and Oak Grove. So it's not just the public school system. So we reach out to everyone. So you just get a great cross-section and a very authentic cross-section of the community. So it's been very exciting over these years, and I think what blesses me most is that there are now 15 programs, and I only basically participate in four as far as the administration and running it. But we now have San Clemente, we have Oceanside, Escondido, Carlsbad, and so many, San Marcos, and several others because folks have come, sponsors, like many of you up there, and they'll say, hey, I live in this town and I want to start a program. So I've kind of shown many other communities how to start one. So it's just fabulous to know that other communities are taking what we do here in Temecula, Marietta, Lake Elsinore, and Paris, Menifee, and they want to be able to show off their students and their families and come together as a community. So it's just been a real blessing. So I appreciate the opportunity in Marietta specifically. We partner with the Marietta-Wildomar Chamber of Commerce and the Marietta Valley Unified School District, so they all come together and help out. So it's a wonderful partnership. So thank you all for honoring us. We really appreciate it, and we're always looking for more sponsors.
So Sally, as the current mayor, 2024 mayor, you can only imagine the request that the mayor has to attend events and speak.
Yes.
And when I'm unable to attend an event, my fellow colleagues are so gracious to step in. And several of our colleagues have had the opportunity to attend, and I want to give them a minute to express what it meant to them to attend the Student of the Month. And Councilmember Holliday, I see you're very anxious next to me. Please, sir.
Hi, Sally. How are you doing?
Great.
Excuse my voice. So I got involved with an organization called the Marietta Valley Foundation back in 1996, and I met Margaret Jones.
Yes.
Who you know very well. And Margaret Jones always talked nonstop about Student of the Month, invited me several times, and I never attended, not sure why. And then, as Mayor Stone mentioned, she couldn't attend one, and she said, would you do this? I said, I'd be happy to. And I realized, attending that one event that I did a few months ago, it's been my loss not having been involved with that program all these years. And I do understand why Margaret Jones has been a fixture at that event for as long as she has. So I certainly appreciate everything you do for that.
Well, thank you. Margaret actually chaired and emceed our program for 26 years, and she still comes today, and we call her Mama. So we just love her to pieces.
Councilmember Lavelle.
I have a similar story. I work for Loma Linda, and for 12 years, I believe, we've sponsored your event, and it comes up on our budget on what we're going to do for the year. And I just this year got to attend one as City Council. And I can tell you, it was an amazing experience. The five high school students that were there probably had more talent and promise than my entire graduating class of 27. So I just, I was so just motivated by seeing the kids and everything they had planned to do and had already done. So thank you for doing those events, and thank you for doing it for the kids.
Well, thank you for attending, and we appreciate Loma Linda and Catherine Pepe. So thank you very much.
MPT Warren.
Hi, Sally.
Hello, Cindy.
I just absolutely adore the program. When I get to listen to students share their hearts and learn from their failures and rise from their, I want to say, their difficulties and their challenges, and they're up there and they're telling you this, and their eyes, they start down, and then they come up, and their eyes sparkle because they have true meaning of self-worth, and there's nothing better. And your program gives them that and so much more. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for recognizing these kids who are trying so hard to make a difference, not only in their family, but their future and the futures of their families. Thank you so very much. It's always been an honor to be at your event. I love it.
Well, thank you for attending. We love your son as well he attends, and thank you for sponsoring. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Mayor. Sally, you know, being mayor last year and being able to attend the Student of the Month, like our current mayor said, it is moving. It is, I feel changed every time I would hear those stories, whether it was perseverance or just amazing success and hope for our future. And you know, those are all Marietta students. Those are all Marietta residents. And you know, every one of us loves Marietta from up here. And I am just so excited to have that program continue and to see what the future holds because it is so bright here in Marietta, and I thank you for shining the light and really allowing those students to step forward. And I think some of the most touching things are the parents' reactions or the parent's story, the parent talking about their child and listening to their stories about family, and that's so dear and true to my heart. So I thank you for all the enlightenment that you're giving our community, and you are truly a shining star as well. So thank you.
Well, thank you. You are so kind. I appreciate that. I want to say to Andy Morris, you want to stand for a minute, Andy? Because Andy is one of our sponsors, and he is our greeter, so he gets to shake hands and greet and welcome all the families and all the students. Look at that smile. Thank you, Andy.
Sally, every mayor has an opportunity to recognize someone in their community, and you are who I am recognizing as the current mayor.
Thank you.
And typically, the mayor is the one that signs the certificate. But as you can tell by my colleagues and how much we appreciate all that you've done, all five of us have signed the Certificate of Recognition. So with that said, Sally Myers, founder and CEO of the Student of the Month program, on behalf of the city of Marietta, we would like to thank you for your hard work and commitment to Marietta, the Wildomar Chamber of Commerce Student of the Month. Your dedication, passions, and contributions are greatly appreciated on this day presented, second day of July 2024. So with that, I'm going to invite my colleagues down, and we're going to take some pictures.
Well, that is wonderful. And when you're doing that, I want my husband to stand, Mr. Gary Myers. Forty-seven years. So thank you, honey. Okay, ready? The mic's on. One, two, three.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? Great. With that, we can get a motion and a second to approve the agenda. I see we have a motion by MPT Warren and a second by Councilmember DeForest.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the City Manager Administrative Update. The City Manager Administrative Updates is an opportunity for the City Manager to provide community updates as well as department or commission announcement on current or upcoming projects. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick reminder, the next two city council meetings, we will be dark, and that is July 16th and August 6th. So there will be no regular council meetings. And the next city council meeting that we will have is Tuesday, August 20th. So mark your calendars. And I'm going to ask Christina Davies to come up and give her community update. Yes?
Well, good evening, everyone. So again, just coming up here to talk more about what is going on in Marietta. As we know, Fourth of July is coming up, Independence Day. I love a good party. I think everyone else out here does as well. But let's talk about fireworks. I just want to remind everyone, fireworks are illegal in Marietta and Riverside County. I know that Marietta Fire and PD, they've been posting on social media as well. So I just want to remind everyone that. And if you do hear fireworks, there is a, we have a form that you can fill out, and now as I'm looking at this, it did link, so it's in blue, so you could hardly see it. But for those who are watching online, if you cannot see it that well, it is mariettaca.gov/fireworks, and that is a form that you can fill out. So if you happen to hear people setting off fireworks, instead of calling 911, of course, if there's not an immediate danger, you can go to mariettaca.gov/fireworks and report those illegal fireworks. And speaking of the heat and fireworks, well, things are heating up this week, and so I just wanted to put up some safety reminders out there to stay hydrated. If you can, I know it's hard, but limit your time outdoors if possible, especially with the holiday coming up. I know a lot of people are going to be outside. Wear sunscreen, and this one, if you do happen to be out traveling with your little ones, always look in the backseat before you lock the door. And then, of course, just to stay informed, so follow Marietta PD on our social media as well as Fire and our city accounts. And then, events that are coming up, we have concerts in the park that are starting. That will be Saturdays in July from 7:00 to 9:00 at Town Square Park and Amphitheater. And then, we have our Coffee with the City that will be happening at the end of this month. And of course, I always say this, but I would love it if everyone could sign up for our newsletter, follow our social accounts, and all that information can be found at mariettaca.gov/Connect. And before I leave, one more quick update. I've mentioned in the past, but we are going through a website refresh, and so that website refresh, next week, people can expect to see just a little bit of a different design on our website, but along with that comes this ongoing effort to make our user experience better for our community. All right?
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Christina. Next, we have our City Clerk, Crystal McDonald, and she's going to come up and give a brief update on the upcoming election.
So good evening, Mayor and City Council. So for those watching who don't know, I'm Crystal McDonald. I'm the City Clerk and the local elections official for the city of Marietta. And so what I want to do is share some efforts that my office is making to engage with the community. As Christina just spoke, you know, we're connected by community, and the Clerk's office is really trying to make an effort to be connected by engagement. And so this is the onset of it, and we're very excited. Before I move on to that, I do, I feel compelled to say that I just would like to remind folks of my role. So I'm an impartial local elections official, and what that means is I'm here to provide information. I don't support nor oppose any candidates, any council members, any elected officials, commissioners, and applicants. And so with that, that's really where this is coming from, so I'd just like to say that for members of the audience. So I'm really excited because we're going to be holding an informational session. It's going to be Saturday, July 13th, from 11:00 to 12:30. It's going to be here at Council Chambers, here at City Hall. We're going to spend some time just learning about qualifications, understanding responsibilities, and also, I'm going to provide some insight on the application process or on the election process for anybody who is interested in learning or who's interested in applying. And so we're going to spend about an hour doing that, and then the last half hour will be like questions. It'll be roundtable-ish, and we'll be serving a light lunch over there in the veterans' room. And then after that, in the afternoon, you can go to concerts in the park, which is what Christine just advertised. So I think it could be a fun day. Come learn about how you can, you know, contribute to your community and then go to a concert in the park. Why not, right? And so, let's see. So with that, what we're going to be, this is the opportunities that are available. So we have two city council seats. It's districts three and four. We also have eight vacancies in the other commissions, and they're listed there. So you'll see, there's five of them, and they're actually pretty substantive to the city. They advise the city council, and so we really are encouraging folks to get interested and see how they can help improve our city and provide advisement to the city council. So like I said, it's eight scheduled vacancies. I have two alternates and then one youth. So we're really looking to get information out there to folks so we can give them what they need. And that also includes anything pertaining to the election and/or commission vacancies. And so if anybody is interested, there's a QR code. I would love for you to contact my office. There's my phone number, my email. Scan the QR code, we'll add you to the interested list. And I really look forward, hoping that we get a little bit of engagement, more than we have in the past. And then you get to kind of hang out with me on a Saturday, so what could be better than that? So I'm available for questions if you have any.
Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you.
And that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Moving on to Governing Body Commission's Committee Board reports. This is an opportunity for the governing body to report on opportunities for the city council to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, commission committees, and board meeting attendance. We will move on. You have three minutes not to exceed, I'm sorry, you do not exceed three minutes. Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you so much, Mayor Stone. You can see that's moving up there on the screen, my governing board announcements. I just wanted to highlight a few things. Attended the Marietta Fire and Rescue Citizens Academy. What a great group of firefighters that we have and amazing collaboration with the community. It was a very diverse group that attended that from all walks of life, which was quite fun. I am very saddened that I was gone for the ladder walk, and I hope to maybe come back next year and to actually go up on the ladder. So, but what great fun, great job. Kudos to the fire department for actually bringing what you do, which is harder than you think, to the community. So attended the Old Town Music Festival. Great, great event, hotter than heck, but it was great. We actually even got to see a satellite be launched right over the stage, which you can see that picture, which was really amazing. So I also chaired the Southwest Regional Higher Education Coalition. This event and this coalition collaboration, or coalition, excuse me, the coalition is getting larger and larger with different people coming to the table. As you can see, each meeting we're having is approximately 40 to 45 people, and we're all engaged for the higher education platform at the University Center at Mount San Yosteno College, bringing the four-year university here. I'm happy to announce that we have gotten over, we are almost to the halfway point of 16, we're approximately $8 million right now, and we are heading to the $16 million that we will need to do the build-out and the improvements at the university tower at Mount San Yosteno. So that is really exciting. Many people are working towards that. Attended the grand opening of Trader Joe's, what fun that was, and what an amazing store. And also, with about 10,000 of my closest friends, I'm not sure if that's the right number, I attended the Marietta Birthday Bash. What amazing fireworks. Kudos again to staff for putting on a seamless event. It was a lot of fun, and there were so many people enjoying themselves, great bands as well. So thank you so much. If you need to get ahold of me, there's my email address on the screen as well as my cell phone number. If you want a faster response, shoot me a text, and I'll get back to you as soon as possible. And that is the end of my governing board announcements. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Before I call on my colleagues, I want to remind you that these are GBA, GBRs. GBAs are at the end. Councilmember Lavelle.
I have only one. I attended the quarterly Southwest Community Finance Authority meeting. Nothing to report out.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You attended with me the Code Enforcement Ad Hoc Committee, and we're making progress on that and looking forward to bringing some suggestions to council shortly. Also, with several of my colleagues, we attended the Western Regional Council of Governments' General Assembly, and I attended the Executive Directors Meeting the following day. One of the speakers was Malia Cohen, who is our state comptroller, and was fairly impressed with her, even though she had admitted being a registered Democrat. She's actually is interested in what cities have to say. And so I find that unusual at the state level, so I appreciated her insights. And she, to the executive directors, said her door is open. So if we have issues, we can reach out to her. So that was nice. And then, yesterday, I attended the Regional Conservation Authority. We're working on the fix to the MSHCP plan. It's a tough process that we're in the middle of, probably going to take another nine months to a year to even come up with suggestions, but we're working very hard on that. So we can continue to get projects, worthwhile projects approved without having to go to state and federal wildlife agencies. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I too attended on June 20th, the WRCOG General Assembly Meeting. On June 24th...
MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I too attended on June 20th, the WR cog general assembly meeting. On June 24th, I attended the Riverside County Transportation Commission's Budget and Implementation Meeting. There was nothing to report out to that. On the 26th, I attended the Southwest Elected Leaders Collaborative. There was a presentation from Chris Gray, and we are trying to figure out ways to reduce intra-city freeway trips between neighboring cities. And what I mean is jumping on the freeway, say at Marietta Hot Springs Road, and jumping off the freeway at Cowoaks to go to Target. We're trying to find side streets to go on, and so we don't disrupt the traffic flow on the freeway. Also, I attended the T Now meeting, which is a, a meeting off of the RTA. And we have, we came up with a great idea. We're going to do the Great Bus Challenge now versus the Southwest Elected Leaders. We're going to pick a spot with everybody that's involved in two of the organizations, and we're going to go on the app, and we're going to ride a bus, and we're going to see who gets there. And there'll be, you know, lunch or something while we're there, and then who can get back. So I don't know who will get stranded and who won't, but it should be a lot of fun. And we're going to do that in the fall when it's not quite so warm. And the last thing I did attend is the Riverside Transit RTA Commission Board Meeting. And I want to highlight two things that I thought was extremely important at that meeting. Two operators, coach operators were recognized. One of our coach operators, Sandra Dubey, was, was recognized for saving a young teen during a kidnapping that she witnessed as a bus driver. And she followed all the rules, and she saved a young girl's life. And that was pretty heroic and very exciting. And then our bus driver, Gene Jackson, rode up to the Marino Valley Bus Stop and realized that somebody had started a fire. It was smoldering. He did all the proper protocols, got his fire extinguisher out, doused the fire, but waited for the fire department to show up to make sure that it had not spread. So two heroes were given recognition. That was very exciting. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, MPT Warren. For myself, I attended with Councilmember Ron Holliday, the Code Enforcement Ad Hoc Committee. And I will definitely say that we are making progress, and we will be reporting back soon about some additional suggestions, and it's going very well. Also, I attended the Southwest County Elected Leaders Collaborative that MPT had reported on with regards to the synchronization between, of lights between our neighboring cities. And that concludes my Governing Body Commission and report. Moving on to public comments, this is non-agenda items. Any person may address the governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action will be, may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Requests for more time must be made to the city clerk with a timing limit to a maximum of six minutes. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Adda Andy Morris.
Good evening.
Mayor, city council members and residents, my name is Andy Morris, and I'm the board member for Elsinore Valley Miss Water District. I represent the area of Marietta and Willdamar. And I'm here tonight to speak about a water seepage concern affecting residents of Aaron Court in Marietta that was reported on KCAL News and the Valley News and in the Valley News about a little over a week ago. We at Elsinore Valley totally understand the frustration and distress the situation has caused these residents, and we are committed to addressing it with transparency and empathy. I briefly want to touch on some key facts that I know today. First, on April 15th of this year, the district took water samples from these different locations that are affected. The lab results confirmed that the water was not similar to the public drinking water. On June 17th, just a couple weeks ago, we conducted additional water sampling. The lab results confirmed that the water leaking from the properties versus our water system water has different qualities. This validates that the water saturating the property on Aaron Court does not originate from drinking water systems. The water quality was indicative of groundwater. Secondly, we care about our residents and have had prompt continuous response to these residents' concerns. Since the initial report in March of 2023, Elsinore Valley Miss Water District staff has visited this neighborhood at least 13 times to conduct thorough investigations and address residents' concerns promptly. We responded every time a resident called, ensuring their concerns were addressed immediately and comprehensively. Since finding about the issue myself a couple weeks ago, I have visited the area, been in contact with the residents, keeping them informed as to my efforts. Lastly, EVMWD is committed to working with all stakeholders to find a sustainable solution to the groundwater issue. We have been in close contact with the city of Marietta. On June 25th, our team met with the city manager, city engineer, to discuss the issue and offer our assistance or guidance should the city need it. Even though we have determined that the water is not coming directly from our drinking water system, we remain committed to helping these residents by staying engaged with the city. And just on a personal note, I don't know how much time I have left. Since we were talking about student of the month, I just want to invite any resident who wants to come see the student of the month. We'll be starting back up in September. You can come as my guest. I'll buy you breakfast. And I know we live in a world where it's really tough. And at the end, you get to see these kids that are, just bring hope back to you. And I know that's what you guys have all witnessed. So I definitely encourage anybody who wants to come and see that for breakfast, reach out to me. A. Morris@evmwd.net. I'd love to buy you breakfast. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco Urbina.
Congratulations, Mrs. Lori Stone. Hope your brother is doing good, and that God willing, in our lifetime, there will be a state of Jefferson. Anyway, I'd like to have, well, I'd like to say this to Fifth District City Councilwoman Cindy Warren. When are we at Burnt Vintage Reserve and our sister one-story subdivision, Clarendon Hills, going to get restrooms with running water? I've been asking for this for years, and I keep, I'm ignored. I represent a lot of property owners there, and I know you appointed my Cal Poly Pomona counterpart, Chatarrango, or if he's still here, I don't know. But the issue has not been solved. There's no running water, not even for a pet. And then those bathrooms, the temporary bathrooms, were turned over. We need restrooms with running water. It's a public health, safety, and welfare issue, and don't tell me that there isn't money in the budget for an engineer's report. So I don't know if you behind the scenes, you know, can tell or, you know, get your act together. We're not pleased there. And I know you're going to be termed out, as all of you are, but this has been an issue that's been going on for over 10 years. And why are we getting ignored? The other thing I want, I would like on a future agenda item, is there a police citizens' advisory oversight commission when it comes to police brutality and other issues? Get rid of the police chief, Tony Conrad, and replace him with Lieutenant Durant. He gave me excellent customer service the first time. No one else has done that except at times Sergeant Huss. And anyway, am I on my time limit? Or I got a minute? Okay, traffic. Yes, we need to coordinate more with our sister city of Menifee, where I'm temporarily living, and I'm going to be dealing with the divorce issue that I'm going with. But I'd like to ask, I never met you, Mr. Early, and you got problems on your law firm's directory system, because I could not leave a voicemail message for you that I did for Stephanie Israel, and I never got a returned phone call to confirm that she did get my message. Because I'm on temporary probation, I'm going to be going up to Sacramento and getting a pardon from the governor. And last time I checked, this state of California is not going to go Republican anytime soon. And the national election, it's going to be a tough choice. And I'd like to ask, well, this is probably a register of voters issue, but I'd like to ask you, Mr. Paul Early, I don't know your credentials. Can a person?
Thank you, Mr. Urbina. Your time is, thank you.
I'd like to say that I'd like to have a meeting between 7:00 PM with individual strategy.
Sir, your time is completed.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is approval of items one through 17. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. Are there any requests from city council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstain from voting?
Seeing none.
Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item?
Seeing none.
Okay. I see we have a motion from Councilmember DeForest. I need a second. Councilmember Lavelle, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to public hearings. Item number 18, Continued Hearing Appeal of Planning Commission Decision Adopting Mitigated Negative Declaration for Development Plan Permit, 20022 to 2605 dash 2023 dash 00006, DP slash 2022 to 2605 slash 2023 dash 00006, Marietta Hot Springs and Jefferson Apartments. That was a mouthful. Hello, staff.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So we continue to engage with the applicant and the appellant over trying to resolve this appeal. So at this time, staff is recommending that this item be continued to your meeting of August 20th. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members? Seeing nothing in the queue, I will open up the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, are there any public testimonies, starting with the applicant proponents, followed by the opponents, closing with neutral comments?
I'm seeing none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Would the applicant like to provide a rebuttal of any sort? Seeing none.
Madam Mayor, there's no public comments at all. That's okay.
I'll bring it back to council deliberation. Seeing none. Call for a motion. See a motion by Councilmember Holliday, a second by MPT Warren. Please vote.
Madam Mayor, can we close the public hearing, please?
Sorry. Yes, I will close the public hearing. Sorry. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0, to continue the item to August 20th.
Okay. Moving on to item number 19, Consider the Levy of 2023 Delinquent Refuse Service Charges on Fiscal Year 2024/2025 Property Tax Roll. Are there any members of the city council that wishes to abstain or recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none. Hello, Isaac, how are you?
Good.
You may proceed, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight before you, for your consideration, is the placement of the 2023 delinquent charges onto the 2425 tax roll. The city undergoes this process annually outlined in our franchise agreement with Waste Management. Waste Management is not able to stop service for residential services or residential properties within the city, and as such, this is the only avenue available for the collection of those delinquent fees. The city does collect administrative costs as well as the franchise fees on these once they are paid, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time and place, oh, sorry, are there any council questions? Let me start with that. Seeing none. At this time and place for the public hearing on delinquent refuse charges tax roll, I now will open the public hearing. Has the city clerk received any written correspondences on this matter?
I have not, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the council on this matter or hand in any protest of correspondence? Seeing none. If so, I'll say, if so, please come forward, but I don't see any. And I'll bring it back for council deliberation. Seeing none in the queue, I will close the public hearing, and I'll bring it forward for council discussion. Seeing none. We will call for a motion in a second. I have a motion by Councilmember DeForest, second by Councilmember Holliday. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to item number 20, Marietta Community Service Levy of Annual Assessments. Are there any, are there any members of the city council that wishes to abstain or recuse themselves from this item? Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to recuse myself from item number 20, Zone G, only because I own properties in the zone.
Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also would like to recuse myself from item number 20, Zone G, because I also own properties in this area.
And Councilmember, or MPT Warren.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to recuse myself from item number 20, Zone N, only because I own property in the zone.
Thank you. Councilmember Lavelle.
Surprise, I also own property in, item number 20, in Zone F and G, so I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay. And for myself, I will recuse item number, I'm sorry.
That's correct, item number 20.
Am I, do I have a letter next to mine, or is it just?
You do. You're Zone A and G.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Okay. All right. Hello, Leah.
Hello. Good evening.
Begin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council. My name is Leah Colick. I am the Parks and Community Services Manager for the Community Services District. This public hearing item relates to the annual levy assessments for the Community Services District. The Community Services District assessments help to cover the costs associated with flood and drainage services, street sweeping in most benefit areas, local park, and landscape maintenance, as well as street lighting. They benefit general areas and lettered zones. These assessments are reviewed annually in accordance with the provisions detailed in Proposition 218 passed by the California voters in 1996. For the CSD, these assessments have not increased since their establishment in 1997. Depending on the zone, the annual assessments range from $45.44 to $751.16. The intent meeting for the assessments of the Community Services District took place on May 7th, and the 45-day public hearing notices were issued accordingly. Upon closing the public hearing, it is staff's recommendation for council acting as the CSD Board of Directors to approve the levy report and order the levying collection for the rates and charges for next fiscal year. That concludes the overview of this item. Staff is available for questions, and Wildan Financial is here should you have questions relating to the, how the charges are calculated.
Thank you, Leah. Okay, are there any council questions? I'm not sure what I'm seeing in the queue. That was old. Okay.
Yours is correct. Councilmember Holliday.
So why has the charges not changed since what year?
1997.
That's what I thought. And why is that?
So at the time, these are balloted assessments that go out to each individual zone, and at the time, the CPI, Consumer Price Index increase, was not included in the balloted measure. So we are unable to increase by CPI any of the assessments for these zones.
So without going to another ballot measure to those residents of that zone, it will always be the amount it is today?
Yes, that is correct.
And do you know how much the city is subsidizing that zone since there has obviously been price increases over the years? price increases over the years?
This item covers a number of lettered zones, as well as our exempt budget. I would need to calculate that. I can do that for council. I can't do that this evening, however, at this moment.
That's okay. Do you have, I mean, it's, it's a lot more than it was in 97.
Yes, it is a lot more than it was in 1997. In 1997, we were close to, we were breaking even at that because that's what the charges were drafted as, for the maintenance costs, the electricity, the water, the utility costs at that time. Those have obviously increased, but we were breaking even for the time that these balloted measures were approved.
Ballpark, it's typically if, if you have average of 3% inflation, which we've had obviously higher and lower periods, in 30 years, it will double.
I would think that's.
And so, I imagine that we're probably spending more than half of that cost to assist those residents with their landscape and lighting district expenses.
These are lettered zones, so the next item on the agenda is landscape lighting districts. So these.
So what is this paying for?
So, these are the Community Services District fees. So, these are lettered zones. These are the areas that, prior to the incorporation of the city of Marietta, were established by Riverside County. And then, when Proposition 218 passed in 1996, the city was only three years old. We, at the recommendation of the city attorney at the time, rebaloted those assessments to reaffirm the costs in line with Proposition 218 that had passed in 1996.
Understood. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions because of the queue? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Leah.
Sure.
This is a time and place for public hearing on the Levy of Annual Assessments, Community Services District. I will now open the public hearing. Has the city clerk received any written protests filed against the Levy of Annual Assessments, Community Service District?
We have not.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the city council on this matter or hand in any protest of correspondence? If so, please come to the podium. Seeing none. Does any of the member of the city council have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Call for a motion in a second. See a motion by MPT Warren.
Can we hold one moment on that?
Yes.
Motion, Mayor. We have a situation that arose here where four of the councilmembers all recused themselves from the same Zone G, so we lack a quorum for that particular item at this point. The rules state here in this situation that the rule of necessity can apply, and the clerk can draw lots for two more names so that we have a quorum available to do that. So, if you don't mind pausing so that we can take care of that little item.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir.
I'm actually gonna do just a draw, straw. If you get the short straw.
It's draw, straw, draw lots.
Short straw. Paul? Yes. Paul?
Yeah, sorry.
They get the short, they, they're going to vote.
Short is voting.
Yes, sir. Ready? Y'all know.
Oh, no?
Yeah, right here. Madam Mayor. Okay. So, can we see the straw? Yep, he's got a long, he's got a short. Hold on to yours.
Okay.
I have it. Hey, ready? Except it's the ones that just had. You got it.
Listen, this is a first for everything, right?
Yes.
This is a unique experience that you're all are witnessing, and we're participating in. Thank you, city attorney, Assistant City Attorney, and thank you to our city clerk for doing your due diligence.
You can go ahead and, you can go ahead and call for the vote now.
And who, is it me? And who else?
We can do, do you want to do G separate, Paul?
We can call out G separately, yes.
You can do G separately. Why don't we do that?
Okay. So, Madam City Clerk, I'm gonna allow you to call what we need to do, please, to make sure that. We're just voting on G, correct?
So if you recused, don't vote. And drew the long straw. You drew the short straw, right?
Yeah.
So you and I. And who was the other one that was not?
I'm not in G.
So us three.
It's the middle three. It's the middle three.
Okay, so we're voting right now. So I have a motion by MPT Warren, second by Holiday. The three of us will be voting.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Noting the two recusals, of course.
Okay. Now I lost myself where I'm at. We're, okay. I'm going back to Zone 20. We're going to Zone A, correct?
Now we're just doing all of them. Yeah, it was just that one.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you for keeping us in compliance. You're wonderful. I have a motion by Councilmember DeForest, second by Councilmember Holiday. Please vote. And just to clarify, we're all allowed to vote, right? Just making sure.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0, noting the recusals.
Fantastic. Moving on to item number 21. Council dates landscape and lighting district levy of annual assessments. Are there any members of the City Council that wish to abstain or recuse themselves from this item? Yes? Councilmember Holiday?
I would like to recuse myself from item number 21, Landscape and Lighting District, 16, only because I own property in that district.
Thank you. MPT Warren, is that an old?
No, it's new. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recuse myself from item number 21, LLD 11, only because I own property in the district.
Councilmember Lavelle?
I would like to recuse myself from item 21, LLD 15, because I also own property there.
Okay, great. And I'm good to go, correct? Yes. Okay. We move on, okay. Are there, okay, we will move on to staff presentation. Leah, hello.
Hello again. Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Consolidating our landscaping, please.
That's okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is still Leah Colick. I am still the Parks and Recreation Community Services Manager for the CSD. This public hearing item relates to the annual levy assessments for the Consolidated Landscape and Lighting District. For the Landscape and Lighting District, these assessments help cover costs associated with park, landscape maintenance, and street lighting in more localized areas that benefit numbered districts that were formed after the passage of Proposition 218 in 1996. These assessments are reviewed annually, and in many cases, there were no increases. However, of the 39 active zones and subzones, 17 have increases to the assessments this year, ranging from $5 to $155.36. With LLD 31 as the newest formation for Willow Springs, that has an assessment beginning next fiscal year, 2425, once the property is accepted, the common areas are accepted by parks maintenance. Those assessments will begin at $201 in fiscal year 2425. The intent meeting for the Consolidated Landscape and Lighting District assessments took place on May 7, and the 45-day public hearing notices were issued accordingly. Upon closing the public hearing, it is staff's recommendation for the city council to confirm and provide for the annual levy of assessments in the Consolidated Landscape and Lighting District. That might, concludes my update for this item. Will Dan Financial is still here as well, should you have more technical questions on the computation of the assessments.
At this time, I will take over for the mayor until she returns. Is there any questions from City Council? Seeing none. Back to you. You're right here. There we are, right there. Okay, this, at this time and place for the public hearing on the Levy of Annual Assessments, Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District, I will now open the public hearing. Has the city clerk received any written protest filed against a levy on annual assessment, Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District?
We have not.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. If there's anyone present who wishes to address the city council on this matter or hand in any protest or correspondence, please come to the podium. Seeing none. Does any of the councilmembers have any comments or questions? Seeing none. I will now close the public hearing. I'll call for a motion in a second. A motion by MPT Warren, a second by Councilmember Lavelle. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0, noting the recusals.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to item number 22. Fiscal year 2024/2025 Fire Suppression Assessments. Are there any members of the council that wish to abstain or recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none. Hello, Chief, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm here this evening to present the annual public hearing for the fire suppression assessment fee. In 1981, the voters of Marietta approved a unit of benefit fire suppression assessment by a 79% margin. This annual fire assessment has been approved by the city council each year since 1993, when the fire district became a subsidiary of the city of Marietta. Prior to 1993, the Independent Fire District Board of Directors adopted the unit of benefit fire suppression assessment annually. The maximum fee per unit of benefit is $40, which has remained unchanged since its inception in 1981. That's 43 years. The $40 fee is levied regardless of the property valuation, with most all single-family homes paying this fixed amount in the city. The revenues generated from the fire suppression assessment for this year is approximately $1.5 million. The exact amount will be available by the end of July, when the final tax assessments are complete. Upon the closing of the public hearing, staff recommends that the city council, in their role as the Board of Directors for the Marietta Fire District, adopt Resolution Number MFD 24 dash 224, and authorize the general manager to execute the associated Proposition 218 compliance letter. I'm available for any questions, and we also have Will Dan for any of the technical aspects of the report.
Are there any council questions for the chief? Yes, Councilmember Holiday.
More of a comment, Chief. And I know you know this, but that fee does not represent what the citizens feel about our fire department. Hopefully someday in the future, we can rectify the oversight that was done 27 years ago.
43.
43 years ago, sorry. I'm not a numbers guy. At least not today, anyhow. But it's, it's long overdue that we take a look at that and, and fix that problem. But your department and your personnel are extremely appreciated in the city. Just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holiday. Are there any other questions for the chief? Seeing none. Okay. At this time and place for the public hearing on the fiscal year 2024/2025 Fire Suppression Assessment. Now I will open the public hearing. Has the city clerk received any written protests against the fiscal year 2024/2025 Fire Suppression Assessment?
Seeing none.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. If there's anyone present who wishes to address the city council on this matter or hand in any protest or correspondence, will you please come to the podium? Seeing none.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Start.
Yep. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a public comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Urbina?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like clarification. Is this a citywide street fee, or does it cost more for property owners in the hogbacks if you're in a high fire hazard area? Or how does it, Councilwoman, impact Vintage Reserve in Clarendon Hills?
Madam City Manager, would you like to answer that question?
I think I'll hand it over to the chief.
Sure. This is a citywide. It's actually Marietta Fire Protection District fee, which is, shares coterminous boundaries with the city of Marietta. We expand together. So, it's a, it's a fee that is applied by an equivalency benefit unit, which is a measure of the suppression cost of flowing water for a property that was based in a 1972 act. That's how you came up with the calculation. That calculation is applied to every single-family home in the city of Marietta, which happens to be the Marietta Fire Protection District.
So regardless, like, you know, Vintage Reserve, where I own a property, that's not a high fire hazard area compared to the hogbacks. And so, you're saying that people in the hogbacks don't have to pay anymore?
They pay the, the same amount because this benefit unit well predates the very high fire severity zone, the frat maps those are called from the state. This predates all of that, and it's based on the cost to suppress a structure fire.
Okay. Thank you. You know, it's been hard for a lot of property owners getting insurance and companies, blah, blah, blah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments, Madam City Clerk?
Seeing none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay. Does any of the city councilmembers have any comments or questions for our chief? Seeing none. Call for a motion in a second. A motion by Councilmember DeForest, a second by MPT Warren. Please vote.
Did you close the public hearing, Madam?
Sorry, I will close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Send me home tonight.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Okay, moving on to item number 23, Updated Marietta Management and Confidential Employees' Compensation Plan. Assistant City Attorney Early, may we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor pro tempore, members of the council. This item resides, regards the compensation plan for your city's management and confidential employees. I will be delivering this report tonight, as I am not even part of that group, and a number of the others who typically would provide these presentations are. As you're probably aware, this compensation plan was last updated in, formally in May of 2021. There was some action taken in May of '22, which has not been reflected formally in the documents, so that is part of the action tonight, is to ratify and make whole those changes from 2022. I'll go through some of them in here. Most of the changes that you're gonna see are listed in the staff report, are minor cleanup typographical corrections, some state law changes, some sunset provisions that have happened, so it's just bringing the document in line with current law, and, and those are outlined in your staff report. What I will highlight for you, and what I think is the changes and what's new this, this time around, what's being proposed. And of any significance there, that's a 4% cost of living adjustment that's effective the first full pay period after this approval is given. There's also a change to the New Year's Eve holiday, which previously was a half-day holiday, and that's moving to a full holiday. There's a change to the cash out of annual leave provisions, which was previously limited to only 80 hours annually that could be cashed out. And now, they, those employees affected by this resolution would be able to cash out up to 120 hours, and they'd be able to do that twice a year. And there's a deletion of an annual adjustment language that affected the monthly, their monthly health contributions. The fiscal impact of this for fiscal year 2425 is approximately $590,000. You have a resolution before you that would put this plan into place. That's the recommended action here, is to adopt that resolution. That's 24 dash 4772. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them for you. Otherwise, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, Assistant City Attorney Early. Any questions? I don't see anybody in the queue. Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Councilmember, we'll bring it back for discussion. Any discussion? Bless you. Seeing none. Call for a motion in a second, please. Motion by Councilmember Lavelle, a second by Councilmember Holliday, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a public comment that I inadvertently left out of the non-agenda items. So if it is at the pleasure of the mayor, I would like to call up Jason Race.
Yes, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you.
What'd she say, "non-agenda"? Madam Mayor, members of city council, thank you very much for your time this evening. My family and I just moved here to Murrieta last year. We found our dream home, and we were very happy to move in and join in the community. Shortly after arriving, we began to experience groundwater, from what we were being told, coming up into our lawn in great amounts, sweeping out onto our sidewalks, creating algae, causing mosquitoes, and basically unsafe conditions there. This is not something that is just limited to our home. Our neighbor next door, who had purchased their home just about a month before we did, is experiencing the same thing, if not worse. Other of our neighbors just down the street have the same problem as well. And as we've been reaching out to different organizations, like the Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District, to try and find out, is this a leakage issue? We have come into contact with other people throughout the community of Murrieta that have been complaining of the same thing, the water table coming up and causing flooding on their property. What I'm here to ask for is that the city of Murrieta takes some action in this, because even if we were able to do something on our property, I can't do anything with my neighbor's property or the property down the street, and that water is just going to seep back over. Even if I'm able to alleviate some of the groundwater on my property, what is happening to my neighbor is just going to wind up spilling back over. So this is something that is affecting multiple homes in the community, and it seems to be some sort of a groundwater drainage that is required. And so I'm asking the city to investigate this. We've reached out to different news organizations, like Channel 2, KCAL, they did a news report on this. The Valley News locally has looked into this as well. So I'm just asking that the city council would be proactive in this, excuse me, in trying to help its citizens find out, how can we deal with this groundwater issue before we deal with things like perhaps a sinkhole swallowing up multiple homes? Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Thank you for that, Madam Mayor. That does conclude public comments on non-agenda items.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item number 24, Pickleball Courts Construction Strategy Staff. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Just when you thought you were going to get out on time, we're going to slow this thing down to a halt. I'm just kidding with that. This discussion item before you this evening contains an update on the Community Service Department's strategy to construct more pickleball courts. You may recall that the pickleball was briefly discussed at a city council workshop earlier this year, and was determined to be a future priority for the city. Staff has identified available funding through the American Rescue Plan Act, so we have been busy analyzing different sites. Keep in mind that we are going somewhat out of order process-wise. Typically, the Community Services Department would conduct a Parks Master Plan that would identify facilities requested by the community. As each of you are intimately familiar, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the country, and enthusiasts have been vocal about wanting more courts here in Murrieta. I think it's safe to say that when the Parks Master Plan is completed later this year, it will confirm a deficit of pickleball courts. Staff has taken a number of steps to receive public input regarding the site selection for new courts. This originally started with two workshop sessions last November regarding court etiquette and rules, with the pickleball community held at the Alderwood facility. More recently, we solicited public input on social media, where we received some really good feedback. On June 11th, we provided an update to the Parks Commission regarding options to increase the number of courts. We heard public comment from both pickleball and tennis communities, and received multiple emails after the meeting. Tonight, CSD is going to attempt to do the impossible, and that is to make both the pickleball community and the tennis community happy. Now, "happy" may be a little strong of a word there, but perhaps contempt. We have options to show the city council and hope to receive your feedback, so we can move forward. Should the options seem acceptable to the city council, we could move forward towards design in a relatively short timeframe. Future pickleball and tennis courts could be determined once funding is identified. If, basically, this is the first step in identifying those courts. More courts could be constructed once funding is identified. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrose, I appreciate it. It's what we've all been waiting for, the Pickleball Court Construction Strategy meeting. And as Mr. Ambrose alluded to, we really packed them in at the Parks and Recreation Commission. It was amazing. We had about 25 people from both the tennis community and the pickleball community, so hopefully we have some here tonight that will also speak. So I want to make sure that we understand what our objective is. We were mandated to construct as many pickleball courts as possible. We have roughly $400,000 in funding, and the funding needs to be expended, or at least applied, to construction contracts before the end of the year. So it's a pretty tall order. We only have six months to get this done. There's a lot of work to get done in that meantime. So as Mr. Ambrose alluded to, we heard from both of the communities. So we had tennis community feedback was, and I'll briefly explain why they were giving a lot of feedback at that meeting, is one of the proposals that we had was to convert one of our existing tennis courts to pickleball courts. So we only have three tennis courts in the city. We are lacking in tennis courts. So they were very expressive, and it was really great feedback that they gave us. They don't want to convert those existing courts to pickleball, which we totally understand. We also, they also don't want to locate pickleball courts next to tennis courts. Pickleball is more of a social game, and there's a lot of talking, there's a lot of fun and activity, and it's a more social event. Tennis is a little bit more cerebral, quieter, and, you know, they like to practice in the quiet. Our pickleball community also gave us a lot of feedback. Initially, we had proposed to them, we want to spread as many of the pickleball courts throughout the community as possible. They really wanted to make sure that we understood that they want to have as many pickleball courts at a single location as possible. Like I said, it's a social game. They want to do tournaments, they want to socialize, they want to have a lot of interaction while they're doing their activities. So when we were looking at all of our parks inventory, we were looking for sites that we could locate pickleball courts. So we wanted to pick an existing park. We also really want to have parking and restroom facilities at those locations. We want to have a relatively even grade. We don't have to deal with a lot of drainage issues, and since we're trying to get this done as quickly as possible and as economically as possible, we don't want to have to spend a lot of money doing a lot of grading issues. We also want to have, like I said, minimal drainage issues, preferably at a high point of a park, where we're not having to spend a lot of our budget on mitigating the drainage. We also want to have minimal California Environmental Quality Act issues. So these are the things that we have not done. We have not done an environmental quality study for each of these sites yet, so we're not going to recommend the sites that we select tonight. When we come back and award construction contracts, or when the construction contract is awarded, we'll come up with a SEQA determination at that point in time. So the locations that we looked at, I think it's important to note, there are issues with every single one of these locations. It's difficult to put basically a 70-by-70 pad with ADA walkways onto the court location in a relatively flat area with minimal drainage issues. It's difficult to find those. Those are few and far between. So I do want to point out, we have four pickleball courts in the city. They're located, there's two pickleball courts at B Street Station, right over by the senior center, and then there's two pickleball courts at Alderwood off of Baxter. And the locations that we looked at, you can see, are in blue on the map. So we want to give you a couple of options. Like we said, we initially proposed to put as many pickleball courts through as many locations as we possibly could. This is just a rendering of pickleball courts at, this happens to be Firefighter Park. You can see, this is all to scale. You can put, you can fit two pickleball courts there relatively easily. Our next option is to construct four courts. So this is also to scale. This is our Alderwood facility, where we have existing pickleball courts. The benefit of the Alderwood facility is it's gone through SEQA determination, noise studies. We have all of that information available. It's got a relatively flat grade, no drainage issues. The grade is barely similar to the existing courts there, and we can butt those right up against the courts. As I said before, initially at the Parks Commission, we recommended converting one of the tennis courts at Cal Oak Sports Park, and that was not well-received from both communities. So this is one we're not recommending that we do. So our strategy is to put these, put each location that we're going to select, or whatever location that we're going to select, into design as soon as possible, do the SEQA analysis. And for construction, instead of doing the typical design, bid, build, we're going to leverage our cooperative purchasing abilities. So part of cooperative purchasing is not just buying, it's not buying commodities, it's also engaging in public works contracts. So there's job order contracting, where you can engage with a contractor that has been awarded through a cooperative purchasing network. They've been awarded a contract for construction. They have been on thousands and thousands of line items that are used in public works contracts. And so what you would do is, you would have a design ready for them, they would review it, they would put together a proposal, and you make sure that the proposal is dialed in, you get approval, and then you start construction. It cuts out several months' worth of labor through the bidding process. So this satisfies the bidding requirement for public works. So with that, are there any questions and comments?
Okay, Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. So from the proposal that I see is, am I to assume that the $400,000 is only going to construct four courts?
We're not certain how many courts it's going to construct. That's why we need to go in design. Part of design is doing cost estimating. We hope that we can build at least four courts. We don't know. But as Mr. Ambrose said, this is also not the only time we're going to build courts. As we get funding, of course, there's probably going to have to be additional pickleball courts, as well as tennis courts.
Can you briefly summarize what's involved in the construction of a pickleball court?
Sure. So for example, at Alderwood, we would have to do precise grading. We would have to make sure we've mitigated any kind of drainage issues. We would have to put in a compacted subbase. We would have to put in the court surface. We would have to coat the court in the appropriate paints and coatings that are used in courts. We have to erect roughly a 10-foot fence around the court. We have to install nets. We have to install shorter fencing in between the courts, so balls don't go from one game to the next. And we also have to make sure that there are ADA walkways and accessibility into these tennis courts, into the pickleball courts, from the, hopefully, existing ADA-compliant walkways. That's roughly it, plus a little bit of landscaping.
Understood. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Councilmember Lavelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to the rendering of where you would put the pickleball courts? I don't know what slide it was. Maybe one of the first, the two or the four? The, go to the four. There we go. Maybe I misheard you. It sounded like pickleball and tennis may be something like a rival gang, the way they're different. Is this okay, I guess, being this close?
Those are actually pickleball courts.
So these two, oh, those aren't tennis courts?
Right, so at Alderwood, the design of these, there is a very large backcourt, and I would probably ask the pickleball community whether it's too big of a backcourt. I'm going to assume it probably is, because you have to run around for the loose balls. So these are actually pickleball courts.
Okay, I was just going to make sure Police Chief was okay with that.
Yeah. There is a rivalry, but I'm sure it's friendly. But they are vocal communities, and they have a lot of really great ideas.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Greg Rose?
Greg Ross. You're getting closer, though. You didn't see my name last time. Yeah, it's good that they're listening to us. The pickleball courts, definitely social. I mean, we'd like to have the netting around, but on the backside, just five feet, nothing, and then a bit of netting up above, you know, for the windscreen. That way, people can watch. They'd like to watch. Like tennis, you know, don't want anyone to see him playing. It's okay. Oh, you know how you tell the difference between a tennis court and a pickleball court? Tennis court's empty. All right, anyway. So definitely, you know, please come back with us, and, you know, we don't have to discuss everything, but, you know, definitely needs dividers, separate entrance, because you have one entrance, you disrupt the games as you're walking across, you know, things like that. But, you know, it seems like they are listening, which is great. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you. But yeah, one location, multi-courts, way to go.
Tyler Course?
We're just trying to figure out which side's racket you're...
Well, so my name's Tyler Course. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So because of what he presented, since they're going to not do anything with the California Oaks Courts, but let me tell you a little background. So we moved here, I moved here in 1990. I'm a former ATP, a tour player, I had a world ranking. And when I came, there were three public courts, other than the high school, and that would be the three that we have 34 years later. And so they were proposing to put those in at California Oaks, and since that's not going to be something, then that's not going to be a problem. But it's an issue, because we have a lot of hard time, and actually, there are people that actually do use the courts, believe it or not. I have six kids, I've got two of them with me, we've all played on those courts. They've all learned. I've got one on a pro tour, I've got ones that played number one at junior college, and so we have a lot of players that play in the area, and it's hard. It's not necessarily a summer problem, because the public courts do open. But during the winter months, you have the fall, where the wind, the girls play after school, so you can't get on a court there at a public high school. And then in the spring, they have the boys, where you cannot get on the courts, because they have, right after school, they have their practice. So you can't really get on them. Sometimes they lock the courts, like Mira de Mesa locks their courts, you can't even use them. Mira de Valley is okay usually on the weekends, but the wind is so strong, if you've ever been down on the west side, no one wants to play there in the afternoon, because the wind's blowing about 90 miles an hour. So to take away the courts was just one of the things I just didn't want them to do, because there was so limited amount of tennis that you can actually play here. It's a problem, a lot of people go to Temecula, and no one wants to hear that, but that's what I have to do. And anyway, that's all I would say.
Thank you.
Paul Martin?
Good morning, Mayor. Staff. My name is Paul Martin, and I live close to my best friend, Tyler. We played today. We had fun. It was hot. My name is Paul Martin, and I live close to my best friend, Tyler. And we played today. We had fun. It was hot. But to make a long story short, we really would like to keep our courts because it's so important to us and the kids. I reside at Amanda Park, which is my backyard, and I can hop, skip, and jump, I'm right there. So I get there before him. So I hope, honestly, Mayor, that you consider seriously to not let this happen because we're having one court different from the other, even though it's the same thing. Tennis's been around for at least since the 19th century, and pickleball is young and it's up and coming. And we have young kids that are really enjoying it a lot. But the fact of the matter is here, Mayor, kids get bored pretty quickly. And Temecula is growing, so is Marietta. But kids get bored, and I hope that we don't have a competition between Temecula and Marietta because we cannot keep up with the Joneses. They're expensive on the outside. I think personally speaking, Mayor, I hope that your staff continue to look at this seriously and give us a little chance to say, let us breed and have fun. I yield back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin, I have a question for you. Who won the tennis match today?
Well, Fitz won today, my homeboy. And I hope he continues. Tiafoe is doing well for now. But my favorite is Djokovic. And he's banged up, but it's okay, it's all good. Yeah.
Who won the tennis match between the two of you today?
We worked out today. We're just trying to burn some love handles off. And, but seriously, Mayor, we hope you just put things together for us because we want to keep our courts.
Absolutely.
All right?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I appreciate it. Bye-bye.
That concludes public comments. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and we'll bring it back for council discussion. Seeing none? I will tell, sorry, Councilmember DeForest. A little slow on the button, I'm sorry. So just a question back to the previous slides. So it looks like the four courts together with the other existing two courts, it seems like that would be more cohesive to what's been asked for by the pickleball community. Being a college tennis player, I concur as well is, even though pickleball isn't amazing, even though I don't, I don't, it's like ping pong on steroids, I think, maybe. I think that to appease both, and I think they're both important, like both gentlemen have said, the Alto Marietta expansion, to me, looks like maybe that's where it should be. I know it's on the other end of the community versus me, but it is social and people drive. It's not that far to go to be together and to continue to maintain our current three tennis courts. So that would be kind of just what I would like to lean towards and maybe hear from the rest of my colleagues. So thank you so much, and I appreciate you all coming out tonight and speaking your piece, whether it is two to two, tennis versus pickleball, it will remain to be seen. So thank you all for being here. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mapleton Park, I know, is on your list of potential sites. How many courts would fit over there?
How many courts?
Yeah.
Probably two?
Maybe two.
Depends where, because of some of the flooding issues that are over there.
Yeah, I know, because it's a drainage basin.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember DeForest that the expansion of the Alderwood Park community, since they want the courts together, originally when we talked about this months ago, maybe even last year, it was like, well, let's put two here and two over there and two over there, kind of like tennis courts, because that's what tennis courts, they like them spread out. But I've only played pickleball twice in my life, very poorly at that. And, but I guess it's, I've seen communities use these courts outside of City of Marietta, and there's, I mean, there's a ton of people waiting to get on the court and watching and everything else. It is a very social activity. So I agree with you guys that adding courts to the existing courts are probably the best way to go.
Can I jump?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor? Yes, ma'am. The B Street Station that already has two pickleball courts, is there any diagram to see if you could add to make that area expanded too?
So B Street Station actually has an issue with the existing pickleball courts is they're too close together. There is no area to expand additionally. So when the courts were designed, they had to take up, there was about a four-foot strip that had to be taken up for drainage. So it pushed the courts even closer together. So that was one of the comments that we heard from the pickleball community, is those courts are way too close.
Right.
Together. We may have to look at maybe putting a fence in between to try to help that issue. But yeah, that was one of the courts that we looked at, just to see if there was an expansion possibility, and there is none.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. So gentlemen, you've heard from our residents, there has to be balance. And we're going to ask you to make sure that there is balance for both tennis and pickleball. There are two comments that I like to state. Councilmember DeForest invited me to her home to play pickleball. And I want you to know, I beat her badly, and then come to find out, we didn't even do it correctly because she doesn't even know how to play pickleball. So that's first. Secondly, I was at the BIA dinner, and the chairman spoke very briefly, and there were two major issues that he addressed: high-density development and pickleball courts. And when you talked about high-density development, nobody clapped, but when you talked about pickleball, the whole place clapped and roared, and these are the two issues that we are dealing with. So with that said, Madam City Clerk, this is a receiving file, correct?
Yes, this is just getting information and getting an update.
Thank you. So you have your marching orders.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you to our guests for coming out. This is why we are connected by community. You are our partners. We need to hear from you. And Madam Mayor? Maybe we could have a pickleball lesson. You need to have a pickleball lesson. It was bad. How many bounces here are you allowed? Anyways, thank you all very, very much. Okay, moving on to governing body announcements. The governing body announcements is an opportunity for council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes. The city clerk will use the computerizer timer. Councilmember DeForest. Well, since I already did my governing board of announcements, I did them a little early tonight. So once again, I will just say that if you need to reach out to me, please reach out via text or email, I'm available to you all. So thanks so much. Your pro temp's done. Look at your thing. Councilmember Lavelle.
Oh, wow. I would like to reserve the ability to come back and remind that I did attend, because every single time I do this, I forget something that you guys have on your list. I might interrupt after, but I'll start off. I don't have anything, no pictures or anything like I usually do, but I attended the Old Town Music Festival, and it was increased, it was very hot, but it was also a great time, and that amphitheater was built for something like that, and I'm excited to see how much better it's going to get and what shade options we can come up with at council. Because I think that's the next thing we need to address, is the shade out there. I went to the Birthday Bash. Again, it was very hot. Happy to be there. It is, you know, Marietta being 33 years old, officially as a city, it's a great thing to celebrate. So that was fun, as usual. And then also I attended the Mega Mixer for the Marietta-Willemar Chamber of Commerce. Had a good time there, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. MPT Warren.
That was kind of interesting a few minutes ago. I was busy with all of my council members. We were all pretty busy. I also went to the Old Town Music Festival, and to say it was hot is an understatement, but it was fun, and it was great to see everybody having a great time. I attended the Knowles Ladies Society Luncheon, I just love those ladies up there. Coffee with the city. And I met with our, I want to thank our chief. We met with our Marietta community policing team regarding some e-bikes and motorcycles in some rural areas out in District Five, and they were awesome. We had a great meeting, and everything, everybody went away with some good ideas. So thank you very much for that. I also had the opportunity to meet with, had coffee with Supervisor Karen Spiegel, just to get to know her and her to get to know me. It's always kind of nice to know who the people are on the Board of Supervisors. And I was so excited about Trader Joe's that I did something in the middle of Trader Joe's that I know that we have on film, and I borrowed a cart from one of the ladies that was getting groceries, and I got on it and I rolled through the aisles yelling yay, and I think we have that on film somewhere. It was really fun. So I celebrated Trader Joe's in my own way. So that's how I do things. But the highlight of my, of this month was I was honored to be selected or asked to be the keynote speaker for the Desert High Medical College graduation last Friday evening. It was an amazing experience. And when they graduated, over 138 students in the medical field, ultrasound, veterinarian technicians, medical billing, LVNs, RNs, and they're going back out in our community to work. So it was just so exciting. So that was quite an exciting evening for me, and I was honored beyond measure to represent the City of Marietta at this graduation. And I too attended the Birthday Bash and had fun dancing, laughing, and enjoying the best fireworks show in all of Riverside County. Thank you, staff, for a job well done. That concludes my report.
Thank you, MPT Warren. You can review my governing body announcements on our website. And I also want to piggyback on MPT Warren with regards to our Birthday Bash. And again, I just want to say thank you so much, Brian, to your entire team, to be out there day upon day in the heat. I really, really enjoyed the music this year. It's from my era, so of course, I was up dancing most of the night as well. And our event was just really amazing, and it felt like it was a record attendance to me. So again, thank everyone on behalf of council for their hard work. So thank you. Moving on to... Yes, sir. Councilmember Holliday.
My name wasn't on the list, I got forgotten.
Oh.
I also attended the Birthday Bash, it was amazing, and the ribbon-cutting at Raising Canes and Trader Joe's grand opening. But the thing I want to highlight is I attended the Change of Command Ceremony at Camp Pendleton. It's Marine Corps West Installation is the name of the command, and it covers bases from Camp Pendleton all the way to Yuma, Arizona. So it's the entire west area. And I think there was 12 one- or two-star generals in attendance. And one of the nice things, and it was, there was only four cities represented, San Clemente, Oceanside, one other one from down in San Diego County, and Marietta, myself from Riverside County. I know that Camp Pendleton invites elected officials from all around the area to attend these things. And I happen to have a friend of mine who's a retired Master Sergeant Marine, and so I asked if he would like to attend, and I said, I've got an invitation, I'd be happy to take him. And he loves going, because he was stationed at Camp Pendleton for a bit, he loves going back there. And they do a great job in presenting the ceremony of the change of guard, so to speak. And they do appreciate when local elected to attend these events. And as a veteran myself, I was, I appreciated the event and was happy to see they even acknowledged us as they were going through the generals, we were next, right behind the generals, as we should be. But, but, but they appreciate the partnership with the local community because they know that a lot of their Marines live here in our community. And so I certainly appreciated that, and it was a very nice event. And I, one of my, the rare times, I actually put pictures up. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliday. Moving on to council member requests to add or withdraw items to future agendas. Seeing none? I would like to add for a future agenda item. Councilmember Lavelle and I are partnering with Susan G. Coman, Race for the Cure, and I'd like to have consensus to discuss a Marietta team.
I will second that. I'm always open to discussions.
So we, yes, ma'am.
I apologize. What is the, what is the item we're bringing forward? I'm so sorry.
That's, that's, that's okay. Do you want me to repeat it or no?
No, Madam.
Thank you.
City Manager.
Madam City Manager. Also, at the last regular meeting, I requested item number 19, the Resolution Opposing California Initiative Number 21-004 to A1, the Taxpayer Protection Government Accountability Act, to be brought back as a workshop. I am withdrawing that request due to the State Supreme Court's ruling. With that, seeing no other requests, before we adjourn tonight's meeting, on behalf of the entire Marietta City Council, our city manager and our staff, we want to wish everyone a safe and happy Independence Day. And with that said, we are now adjourned.